To order at 6:30 PM. We have confirmation of the posted meeting agenda. We do have one cancellation, a rescheduling. The 6:35 will be held next month at 6:40.
Yeah, that—
On November 21st.
That actually needs—oh, sorry. That actually needs to occur by action of the board. The Gracianno application will not be heard this evening. The applicant's representative failed to take care of the public notice. So, the board needs to actually take an action to reschedule that public hearing for the next meeting at 6:35.
So, I need a motion. You need a motion?
You need a motion. It's board action.
Do we have a motion to reschedule Gracianno to next one?
No moves.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion by Eric and a second by Edna. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion. Any opposed? Motion carried. Okay. Next, we have the acceptance of the consultants' meeting notes.
I'd like to move that we accept the meeting notes.
Second?
Second.
Motion made by Edna, seconded by Woody to accept the planning consultant's meeting notes. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. You all received the September 19th and the special meeting of October 3rd minutes. Do I have to do each one separately?
Yes.
Okay. Can I have a motion to accept the September 19th meeting?
Move that we accept.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Edna, seconded by Eric to accept the September 19th, 2016, meeting notes. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Can I have a motion to accept the special meeting notes of October 3rd, 2016?
Just a move.
Second?
I wasn't there, so I can't second. I'll second.
Motion by Edna, seconded by Woody. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Correspondents and announcements. I don't think they have any, do they?
I don't think—there's nothing on them. Gretchen, anything? Okay.
Okay. Okay, project updates?
I'll do the first one on the Grassmere Farm Hotel development. Grassmere Farm Hotel, while it hasn't been before the board now in three or four months in terms of update, is moving forward. Been in communication recently with Jonathan Mench and John Montaigne, the project engineer planner. They believe—Jonathan believes that they're within two months at the outside of approvals by the county health department for sanitary sewage accommodations for the phase one development. Similarly, they believe they're in within two months of approval by the village for the water system connection. And also, I believe, almost have in place—if they already don't have it in place—the DOT approval for the northern access point, which will be the principal access point to phase one, as well as the construction entrance location. One of the items that needs to be resolved with the planning board is the specific depiction of the 250-acre parcel from within their five or 600-acre property. That will—the 250-acre parcel—that will actually be committed to the country in two under the terms of the special use permit. We had a field conference today, if you will. Actually, Sharon attended with me, met with Jonathan and his engineer in taking a look at some of the possible boundaries, if you will, for that 250-acre parcel. And I would trust that perhaps as early as next month and certainly the month later, there'll be a specific proposal made to this board regarding the 250-acre parcel. So, it's a positive report. Certainly, they're continuing in due diligence with respect to meeting the requirements of getting the phase one project into ultimately into construction. And the other thing—I guess I can report—in terms of their not only due diligence and commitment to the project, is the fact that they are proceeding with the matter of roof repair, roofing repair, roofing replacement on the manor house so as to basically conserve the property while the rest of the work is—while the rest of the permitting has occurred.
And then, the other project update was Andrew Solomon, 2009 Trust. We all attended two separate site visits to look at the moon glow lighting. The applicant will—now has the opportunity to complete his application and come back to us. At that time, each of the members can give their opinion of what they saw at that site visit.
Yeah, there are—essentially, here, the key item that's awaited is Sloan Architects' submission of a revised plans or whatever in response to the engineering comments that were issued by the planning board, Engineer Morris Associates. So, when that response comes into the planning board, then I think the planning board can proceed with, hopefully, the completion or processing of this application. And at that point in time, consider the two principal waivers that the applicant is seeking. One is clearly the waiver from the uplighting standard. And secondly, the substitution of the, call it, design—landscape design protocol that was submitted, substitution of that for a actual tree-by-tree landscaping plan. Like, the other thing I can report in that regard is I have reviewed that landscape design protocol, if you will, and I think it's a very sound document.
Mark, can I ask a question about—first of all, what's the reasoning behind the ban on uplighting?
Eric, you'd have to speak to the—in that regard—you'd have to speak to those who drafted the zoning law and those who adopted the zoning law. That's the only response I can give you.
Well—
I was not involved in any of the discussion—you directed the question to me. I was not involved in any of the discussion of that particular ban.
Okay, so you don't know why it is?
No, so I don't—
But—
It's certainly—it's certainly, you know, a reaction, I trust, to night sky. Whether it goes too far, who knows?
All right. And what specific part of the zoning code says that we can waive that? That the zoning—that the planning board has the capacity to waive that requirement?
That's a—that's a question, I think, perhaps still to be examined. And maybe I went too far in saying that that can be waived. The landscaping can be waived by the planning board. It may well be that that cannot be waived. And that's, again—it may require a variance consideration. You're right in correcting me in that regard.
Well, in which case, what exactly was the purpose of our site visit? To render an opinion or—
I would trust that would be the case, yes.
Okay.
It gives you—it gives you a basis. If that—if that matter has to go that avenue to the ZBA, it certainly gives you an informed position from which to make a recommendation.
Okay, we still have—
Thank you.
—two more minutes before our next applicant.
Hi, Richard.
Hi, Eric. As long as we have a minute, what we just said is we have the right to waive a formal landscaping plan. Should that be part of our normal application process for everyone? And we should just say, "We waive the responsibility of the landscaping plan"? I mean, if it's a requirement, it's something that we need to waive, then, right?
You typically consider on a case-by-case basis a waiver of those aspects of a submission that are not—those—those requirements that are not addressed in a submission as typically addressed. In this case, lighting happens to be one of those major items that, yes, you could address on a case-by-case basis.
But in general, we're usually not interested, I guess, because of the magnitude of this project—
Right, exactly.
—and the significance of the structure.
Right.
We took an interest, but if it's a small place and no one mentions it, we just—we don't say anything. Know what I mean?
Well, I think it's a question of whether or not lighting even enters into the consideration of a specific application.
Not lighting, landscaping.
Landscaping, not the light—I understand lighting. Lighting—our zoning code clearly states no uplighting, period.
Right.
I'm sure it's going to be a variance that they're going to have to get for that. Why? Who knows?
Here, site-wide landscaping is intended. On most of your small projects, there is, in fact, no landscaping involved. A lot of the small projects, the RCO projects and those.
Okay. It's 6:40. Our next applicant is KPH2 Management LLC, 189 River Road, special use permits, certificate of removal or demolition, and site plan approval. Conduct of public hearing on applications for special use permits under Town Code Chapter 125 zoning, Sections 125-40A 3, 125-54C, and 125-55. A certificate of removal or demolition under Town Code Chapter 125 zoning, Section 125-62, and site plan review and approval under Town Code Chapter 125 zoning, Section 125-73B, in the matter of stabilization of the existing powerhouse on Tax map parcel. The powerhouse being a contributing structure within the Hudson River National Historic Landmarks District and also located within the Historic Preservation HP20 District, the Estates District scenic area of statewide significance, and the town's LWRA adjoining a designated scenic road with the proposed action being a Type 1 action under SEAKER. Gretchen, do we have compliance with the notice requirements?
Yes.
Okay, the applicant presentation?
Good evening. My name is Mark Braminski. I'm here to—I'm here representing KPH2 Management. I'm here to start the discussion about this project. Also with me this evening are architects for the project, Armand Dibias and Cynthia Philkop. And also here is the property manager, Lankin Allenby. So, I will start with a brief presentation and discussion about what's proposed and then actually turn it over to Armand and Cynthia to further the discussion about the details regarding the stabilization of the powerhouse. So, KPH2 owns property on the west side of River Road. It's a little more than 50 acres in size, 50.37 acres in size. The—this—you know, this particular property has been in front of this board recently for a few other repair projects. But this specific project is for stabilization and removal of the roof for the powerhouse that's associated with this property. It's also known as Astor Courts. It was part of Astor's Estates. And this particular application is, as I said, for the powerhouse, which is located near the west-south-southerly portion of the property, right alongside the railroad tracks. And the reason for this application is the powerhouse is in—very much in need of repair. And so, the applicants are proposing to, you know, do some work on this particular structure. And in order to do that, there's some issues with the roof and also stabilization of the building. And so, that's what this specific application is for, just for stabilization of the building and removal of the roof. So, that's the brief—that's the overall view of it. And I think what I'll do now is just turn it over to Cynthia and Armand, and they can discuss the details of that process. And that—all that information was submitted to the board. There's a complete, you know—a diagram of the proposal for—the stabilization and information pertaining to some of the specifics for the removal of the roof. But Cynthia and Armand will get into that now. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Cynthia Philkop, and my partner, Armand Dibias, is here as well. Here are some photos, if you're not familiar with the building. I know some of you were lucky enough to take a walk through and just see the condition that it's in. Unfortunately, the building's roof is really dilapidated, and there are some gaping holes allowing water to come in. And we want to do everything we can to make sure that the structure doesn't deteriorate any further over the winter. So, we're very anxious to do what we can to stabilize it while we are in the process of coming up with repurposing. How can the clients use this building in the future? And we're developing ideas for the design, and we just haven't gotten to the point where we can start implementing any improvements at this time. And we're hoping to be able to submit a design with a master plan in the next few weeks to the board, but we anticipate that it will take some time to go through that process. And so, in an attempt to prevent the building from deteriorating any further, we're going to need to remove the roof. And the roof contains asbestos. And so, that process is challenging because the framing is also potentially asbestos-contaminated. And so, the roof needs to be removed and disposed of properly. And in order to do that, we also need to stabilize the walls because the roof is holding the structure together. So, it's basically a phase one for repairing the building. Leighton has reached out to different contractors, and everyone's ready to proceed as soon as possible before the cold weather really makes it difficult to work outdoors. So, we're hoping that we can get everything in order as quickly as possible.
This is a Armand Dibias architect. This is a schematic of how the walls will be braced. There'll be steel set up along the wall. There will also be a—there'll be a temporary coping built on top of the wall to protect water getting in while the masonry is being repointed.
Can I ask—is there similar bracing going to be occurring on the gable ends as well?
Yes, there is. There's actually—we do have a more technical drawing, and yes, there is bracing at the gable ends. This is a more technical drawing showing all the bracing, and you can see there's bracing on the gable end, and there's also some bracing on the high wall to the east.
Could I have a report on observations made by the planning board field visit? Edna, you were there?
I was there, right. It's a fascinating building with a fascinating history, and it's wonderful that it's going to be preserved. My understanding is that on top of the walls or on top of the limestone, whatever you call that—what do you call that, horizontal limestone?
It's a stone band.
Stone band?
Yes.
The stone above that will be removed because it is in disrepair and will have to eventually be removed anyway to insert new rafters when a new roof is put on the structure. And your intention, I believe, is to cover the limestone with something to keep it preserved?
Yes. Actually, the detail has actually developed a bit since we spoke, and there's actually a more technical drawing that has been developed here. We're actually—the plan at this point, as you can see here, is to not remove the stone to that limestone, but actually build a temporary flashing up on top and leave that limestone in place. I think we decided it was going to be more expensive to remove that stone and then, you know, save it—
Are you talking about the stone above the limestone band?
Yes. All that will be preserved, and as you can see, there'll be a temporary flashing—
I see.
—built on top of the wall while the repointing takes place.
So, the new roof would then be built into the existing beam pockets?
We haven't—you know, we haven't detailed how the new roof is going to be—you know, the detailing of the construction of the new roof.
I think—I think they're referring to there's some brick infill between the joists, and when the joists are removed, they're just small pockets of crumbling brick.
Mm-hmm.
So, I think when we were on the site, they said, "Yeah, we probably take them out, whatever makes most sense in order to encapsulate that band, that freeze piece that goes all the way around."
Richard, did you have any further comments from the site visit?
No, I think what they're doing has to be done, whether they do it now or down the road. So, it only makes sense to do it now before the building is damaged any more than it is now.
For another winter.
Sure.
I attended the site visit as well. It's absolutely a fascinating building. It's—it's great that it's still standing, and to have it preserved like it was originally built—what was it, 1902, I think—would really be great. And to replace the roof—I would like to see the roof replaced in kind of what's there now, is what I would like to see.
You're referring to the shape of the roof?
Any other planning board member comments?
Is—are there any other—is there any other structural damage to the building that needs repair?
While there's—I mean, there's—there needs to be a lot of—you know, there could be that whole flat part of the roof needs to be looked at. Leighton, would you like to add to that?
Hi, Leighton Allenby. The whole roof has to come off, as we discussed in the last meeting on the site review. We're going to take the stone down to the limestone cap, and then, as Armand said, we're going to cap the limestone. That's where the cap will be. That three feet of stone is all loose. It's crumbling. It has to come down, and it will be rebuilt later when we come in with our new plan.
So, I think we've heard two different things here tonight.
It's going to be one or the other.
After we spoke today, you mentioned you did not—we actually have the flashing up a little higher.
Okay, it's going to be—
Also, there's the other flat portion of the roof at some point. I don't know—
Are you talking about the back part with the battery, the battery stores in the pole? That we have to have an engineer look at, and that'll be in the master plan.
But that's not—that's not in jeopardy for this winter?
No, no. We've looked at it, and it's in really good condition so far.
All right. And all the foundation and the stone in general is in—
The stone—we're going to repoint all the stone on the exterior to make sure that it'll be stabilized.
Right.
And then, after the repurpose is done, then the shoring up will be done for the plan that Armand has here.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments from the members of the board?
Yeah, I have one. I think you're doing the right thing. You're trying to preserve the structure. You're trying to do it in a timely fashion because you're fighting the weather. You're basically telling us that whatever is there today will be there tomorrow, and the roof will be replaced probably with a very similar design and everything else. Go for it.
You know, the—I know the roof is a big issue.
Oh, yeah.
And, you know, it can be very complicated depending on what happens inside the building, what form, you know, the roof will take, and that's still in the process of design.
Yeah, but your main concern is preserving the walls, getting that roof down before the roof—before the roof takes the walls down. And that makes perfect common sense to me.
Yes. I might ask a question just for my own curiosity. Where do several tons of asbestos material get taken these days?
Asbestos landfill. I can have a debate with the contractor that's been by the New York State Department. They care, and we have to apply for a permit.
And are the roof rafters going to have to be taken there as well?
Some of them will. The others we're going to use up the furniture or something.
Thank you.
For the record, Gretchen, I assume that you're certifying compliance with all of the notice and requirements, et cetera. Secondly, there has been comment received from county planning, matter of local concern, so it's not an issue. There's been comment received from the Conservation Advisory Board slash Waterfront Advisor Committee consistent with coastal policies, et cetera. No issues identified, actually praising the protection—the effort to protect this particular structure. There's also comment received from the New York State Office of Parks Recreation and Historic Preservation, Division of Preservation. As you know, they made three—they basically plotted the stabilization, saw no problem with the stabilization, and recommended that the work proceed in—well, consistent with three particular recommendations. One is the documentation of the existing roof structure through photographs, drawings, et cetera. Second, the temporary cap of the masonry walls. And thirdly, the—this is the production of a design for the restoration of the roof based upon the original design. The applicant has submitted a letter stating appreciation for those recommendations and indication to follow those recommendations. The only thing I did note in that letter was that the words "based on the original design" were not included in the letter from the applicant, but I think the intent is to—to—it says, "Restore the roof." I guess, "Restore the roof" means "based on the original design." But those—those words were not included in the letter, and I don't know if that was intentional or not intentional.
Are they required to duplicate it?
If—if they were not going to proceed in accordance with that recommendation, Parks might have had another—a different recommendation to make.
But it's a recommendation.
It's a recommendation, yes, yes.
Not a demand.
Yes.
Okay.
But anyway, so the bottom line is, from my perspective, the submission of that particular letter, fundamentally accepting the recommendations made by Parks, would pave the way for a favorable planning board action this evening under both SEAKER and with respect to the approval under the zoning law.
I just want to be clear that we're not prepared to decide what the roof profile should look like.
Yeah, okay. I just—I just felt I needed to honestly report to the board that those words were not in the—in the letter.
Right, but again—
Again, it's a recommendation.
It's a recommendation.
Right.
And tonight, we should move forward with this because they're not building a roof. They're just trying to—
That's right.
—preserve what's there.
You will have—you will have another opportunity to comment on whatever roof design is submitted as part of the master plan.
Okay.
Yep, I agree. Yep, I agree. The only, the only other thing that is on your checklist, you did refer, I believe, the matter to Nancy Kelly, the town historian, and did Nancy have any comments?
Do you have any comments?
I find it very unusual to have an application like this without having any plan to let the future of buildings go away. And so I'm very happy to know that you're working on it, but feel very uncertain about what you're going to do.
Well, I don't, I don't think we want to make anyone nervous or concerned. I think our intention is to get through this process before the cold weather sets in, so that we can take our time and really communicate with everyone and review possible designs for the powerhouse in, you know, of a reasonable fashion without waiting until another winter goes by. So I think, you know, if we could respectfully request to just allow us to stabilize the building, then I think we'll have time to go through the process for the master plan. This is only one component that's going to be submitted in the master plan.
It seems like you would be having some general idea of what the use of the building would be or what plans you're going to do.
It's complicated to restore a powerhouse that, you know, nowadays, most homes don't have powerhouses anymore.
Most didn't then either.
So, you know, we're brainstorming on a lot of other ideas for the property at the same time.
We have a referral response from the C A B and the W A C. Do you want to present them, any of you?
Bill Dowden, Conservation Advisor Board. I think Mr. Brode commented about the C A B, so there would be nothing else to add to it. The Conservation Advisory Board is pleased that the restoration work will follow and that their, the restoration work is consistent with the L W R P. Thank you.
Any public comment? Anyone from the public? Comment? Okay. Read the draft seeker.
Yeah, the, I'm going to recommend one word change in the draft seeker resolution, and I'm searching for the word, maybe somebody can help me. There's a reference there to the matter being described in the applications and supporting documentation presented by the applicants, complemented by the applicant's commitment as stated within the annex letter to implement the recommendations, and there is not a commitment to implement the recommendations fully. It's to, I don't know, carefully consider to the extent practicable or something, but there isn't a commitment to implement the recommendation regarding the roof design. So that word "implement" needs to be changed to something softer.
Or the word "commitment" changed to something.
Why are we discussing roof design? That's not the application. The application is to take, to stabilize the frame.
I don't see where we should be restricting them for future plans that they haven't brought in front of us yet, and why we're worried about that.
They've agreed to, they've agreed to the.
I think you're being a little hard with your interpretation of that, and I don't see where it's necessary to even be talking about that for this phase.
How about we accept that they take it under consideration?
I have no problem with, you know, to carefully consider, as for instance, because, you know, I just, again, pointing out the.
Seems as if they are going to consider.
And I think that's, that's consistent, that's consistent with the matter of recommendation from.
Okay.
Okay, carefully consider.
Carefully consider.
Acting good faith is what we're really looking for.
Yeah.
Okay.
Considering good faith is even better. That sounds, that's, yeah, considering good faith.
What does that, what does considering good faith mean?
Let's not be distant, let's move on.
Carefully consider, considering good faith, whatever you choose.
Okay. The Town of Reinbeck Planning Board hereby acts as follows under proposed action being a type-one action involving applications to the planning board by KPH2 Management LLC for special use permits under Town Code Chapter 125 zoning, Sections 125-48, 3, 125-54C, 125-55, and 125-62, site plan review and approval, under Town Code Chapter 125 zoning, Section 125-73B, and a certificate of removal or demolition under Town Code Chapter 125, Section 125-62, all in the matter of stabilization of the existing powerhouse on tax map parcel being a contributing structure within the Hudson River National Historic Landmarks District and further located within the Estates District Scenic Area of statewide significance the Town's Historic Preservation H P twenty district and the L W R A and on a parcel adjoining a designated scenic roadway, River Road, County Route 103, all as depicted or otherwise described in a site plan prepared by Mark Reminski, P E and L S, dated August 29, 2016, a project narrative and details compiled by. Architects, and in a coastal assessment form and a full E A F Part One, each signed by Mr. Reminski. One, determines upon review of the full E A F Part One and its own completion of the annexed E A F Part Two, in consideration of the criteria for determined significance set forth at Title VI, Part 617, 7C N Y C R R, the historic preservation policies underlying the Historic Landmarks District designation and the pertinent coastal policy set forth within the Town's L W R P, that the proposed action as described in the applications and supporting documentation presented by the applicant, complemented by the applicant's commitment as stated within its annex letter of October 19, 2016, to, considering good faith, the recommendations set forth by the N Y S O R, N Y S O P R H P Division for Historic Preservation within its further annex letter of October 11, 2016, will cause no potential significant adverse impact on the environment, and thus issues a negative declaration determinative non-significance, deeming an environmental impact statement to not be required and stating such will not be prepared.
The rest of that, the rest of the resolution basically deals with ministerial conditions, authorizing signing, et cetera, so I don't think you need to read that.
Okay, so I can just.
Go for a motion.
Can I have a motion to accept it?
I'll move. Second.
Motion by Edna, seconded by Eric, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion, oh, motion carried, I have to poll the board. Eric?
Yes.
Edna?
Yes.
Richard?
Aye.
Woody?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Motion carried. Can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion.
Second.
Woody, motioned it, seconded by Richard. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Consistent with the little modification that was made on the SEACER resolution, one minor change in the draft approvals resolution would be top of page seven in number paragraph three, for restoring the roof based to the extent practicable on the original design, as opposed to inserting the phrase "to the extent practicable."
Based.
Otherwise, that's consistent with the SEACER position.
I don't have to read the first paragraph, right? Okay, draft approvals resolution, I'll start with number one, in the matter of the application for certificate of removal or demolition. A, finds as did the New York State Office of Parks Recreation and Historic Preservation, the intended stabilization of the powerhouse to have no adverse impact on this historic property, provided the following actions are taken to further ensure the continued protection and viability of this historic structure. One, documentation of the roof structure prior to its removal. Minimum documentation shall include interior and exterior photos and drawings of the structural system, and shall be submitted to the zoning enforcement officer prior to issuance of a demolition permit. Two, if deemed necessary, as the work is undertaken, provide a temporary cap for the newly exposed top of the masonry walls. Three, as part of the ongoing preparation of a master plan for the overall Astro Courts property discussed during pre-submission conference, develop a plan for restoring the roof based on, to the extent possible, on the original design. B, grant subject to the Z E O's receipt of the above cited existing conditions documentation requested certificate of removal or demolition, and authorizes the Z E O and/or building inspector to timely issue the required demolition permit. Two, in the matter of the application for special use permits. A, first finds a proposed work to be consistent with the general standards for special permit uses set forth at Chapter 125, Section 125-67. B, second, further finds the proposed work, though located within a thousand feet of the Hudson River, to have limited effect beyond the existing conditions on either the visual quality or the environmental and ecological resources of this water resource, and thus authorizes issuance of the requested special use permit under Town Code Chapter 125, Section 125-40, development near streams, rivers, wetlands, and other water bodies, and Section 125-54, water resources protection overlay district. C, third, further finds the proposed work to have no impact due to distance vegetation and topography on the scenic roadway, River Road, County Route 103, adjoining the project site and otherwise within the Estates District Scenic Area of statewide significance, and thus issues the requested special use permit under Town Code Chapter 125, Section 125-33, scenic roads and scenic areas. D, conditions, the issuance of the above cited special use permits upon the securing of site plan approval and the timely satisfaction of all conditions and/or requirements related to site plan approval. Three, in the matter of the application for site plan review and approval, A, in consideration of the nature of the proposed work, waives the submission of any data not heretofore presented which would otherwise be required upon strict application of the submissions checklist set forth within Chapter 125, Section 125-75 subsection C. B, approves the application under Town Code Chapter 125, Section 125-73, and authorizes the chair to stamp and sign the above cited plan and the associated project narrative and details, and to transmit signed copies thereof to the applicant, the Z E O, and the building inspector upon the applicant's satisfaction of the following conditions and/or requirements within the next six calendar months. One, submission of the documents for stamping and signature in the form and number specified under Town Code Chapter 125, Section 125-78 subsection B, or as may be modified by the acting chair in consultation with the Z E O. Two, payment of any fees or reimbursable amounts due to Town related to review and processing of both this application and the aforementioned applications for certificate of removal or demolition and special use permits. Can I have a motion?
I move that we accept all of these resolutions.
I second it.
Edna, and Eric seconded. Poll the board. Eric?
Aye.
Edna?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Woody?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Motion carried.
Everything you need.
I have a quick, quick question. Why do we have authorization of the Z E O and/or building inspector? Doesn't a building inspector get out there?
No, demolition, there are divided authorities between certain permits, and I believe that, what is it, demolition permits are with the, is it the Z E O?
For historic structures.
For historic structures. Oh, that's, yeah, that's the.
So they have to bring in documentation, what's there, pictures and everything handed to the Z E O, and then get the signature, sign off on both of them.
Yeah, yeah. Thanks, thanks, Mark, for the, you beat me to the clarification on that one.
Thanks for teaching us something.
Yeah, you've been through it enough.
So good luck. Okay, next, we have Barry Nemers, Nine Charles Street and Corning Street, special use permits and site plan approval. Conduct of public hearing on applications for special use permits under Town Code Chapter 125 zoning, Sections 125-48, 3, 125-54C, and 125-69B, and site plan review and approval under Town Code Chapter 125 zoning, Section 125-73B, in the matter of renovation of an existing garage on tax map parcel within Reincliff Districts R C B, R C H, and R C O, and the Town's L W R A, with the garage being a non-contributing structure within the Hudson River National Historic Landmarks District, and the proposed action being a type-two action under SEACER. Gretchen, did we have compliance with notice requirements?
Yes.
Applicant presentation.
My name is Stephen Falk. I'm here on behalf of Barry Nemers. What we would like to do is replace all the siding on this garage. The garage is about 14 feet by 24 feet. The siding is in serious, serious state of disrepair. There also would be a few pieces of trim that would have to be replaced, a door that would be replaced because it's falling apart, and we would replace that with the same size and same configuration. The garage door possibly would be replaced with the same size and configuration. Other than that, any other structural, or not structural, but any other decay or rot that we'd find would be replaced, and the building right now is a real eyesore, and we intend to rehabilitate it and bring it back to what it was 30 or 40 years ago.
Okay, observations made by the planning board members.
You mentioned when we were there that at least one of the sills, and possibly both, would be replaced, and that you would be jacking the building up.
Yeah, we would just, I think it's a two-by-six, it's about 10 feet long, that supports some of the studs. That seems to be rotted, and we would probably just lift the building up a little bit and slip a new one in.
Right, and it's sitting on concrete block.
Right, that's, the foundation is concrete block, and that seems to be in fairly good shape.
And you had mentioned when we were there that you were thinking of a steel door for the personal entrance door?
Possibly, or fiberglass. But in, in essence, it would look exactly like the door that's there now. Hopefully, it'd be better constructed.
And you, and you mentioned that your plan is to use similar siding, horizontal siding, less wide than what's there.
No, probably about the same, about the same size, probably.
About the same width?
Yeah.
And you, you mentioned that you were planning to paint it the same color as the nearby house.
We tried to match it up with the house that's right next door.
And, you know, that was all that I noticed. Eric, did you notice anything more?
No, I mean, it looks like a good project for fixing up. It looks like it needs, I'd say that 99% of it is cosmetic.
Yeah, that's, it is, basically.
And so, it's a good idea.
Yeah, we wouldn't change the building at all. What we're doing is trying to bring it back to what it was 40 or 50 years ago when it was built.
Now, as I recall, there's either plywood or OSB underlayment under the siding, is that true?
Yes, there is, plywood.
Plywood, okay. So that's plenty, the building is plenty stabilized in that regard, and.
Yeah, it is, the building is stable.
Okay.
And the roof looked fine. There were some roof trim boards that will need replacing.
Yeah, the fascias and stuff, it's, I mean, my.
Yeah, anything we find that's bad, we would replace.
But they would be replaced with things that look the same, whether or not it's the same material.
Yeah.
It's like the siding, it's something that's going to be, going to make it look the same, but possibly be made out of better materials that'll be more durable than what's on there.
Absolutely.
Do we have a response from the C A B?
The Conservation Advisory Board had no additional comments. They found the policies to be consistent, the repairs to be consistent with LWRP policies. Thank you.
Just, just one note, as I, as I recall, the small door going into the, at the rear of the garage, that's not even visible from, from the street, is it?
No, it's not.
On the, the electric garage door, the current one has lights. There's no glass there, but it has lights. Were you planning on doing something like that, or?
I would, yeah, probably replace it with very similar, as close as we can get to the, the one that's there. I'm not sure that it's electric, actually.
Yeah, I didn't see any electric mechanism.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
It's an overhead door.
Anyone here from the public? You have determinations? Do you have determinations?
No, no, it doesn't apply here.
Okay.
Just correcting your, correcting what it says in the meeting, now, if there's no determination of significance under Saker, in this case, it's a type-two action under Saker, it's precluded from environmental review.
Okay.
So therefore, therefore, the action would be, if there's nothing further, would be to close the public hearing and then move to the approvals resolution.
Correct.
I just have one question for the applicant, just to make sure the resolution is accurate. I didn't go back and check. Are we talking about wood siding or hardy board?
Hardy board.
Hardy board, okay. I just.
Okay, can I have a motion, close public hearing?
Motion.
Woody?
Second.
Seconded by Eric. Hold in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No. Motion carried. Public hearing is closed.
Gretchen, before Sharon reads the resolution, 2A, line four, where it says Sections 40 and 154, simply insert in both cases 125-40, 125-54. And secondly, under 3A, end of the second line to the beginning of the third, delete the words "the wood or." That was a reference to the siding.
Okay, draft approval resolution. The Town of Rhinebeck Planning Board hereby access follows on the applications by Barry H. Nemers for special use permits under Town Code, Chapter 125, zoning, Sections 125-40A3, 125-54C, and 125-69B, and site plan review and approval under Town Code, Chapter 125, zoning, Section 125-73B, in the matter of renovation of an existing private garage on tax map parcel on Corning Street within Rhine Cliff District's RCH and RCO, the Hudson River National Historic Landmarks District, and the town's LWRA, as depicted by location on the site plan prepared by Marie T. Welch, LS, and dated August 29, 2016. One, in accordance with Part 617.5 NYCRR, reaffirms the board's prior classification of the proposed action as a type-two under Saker for which further environmental quality review is precluded. Two, in the matter of the application for special use permits, A, deems the proposed renovation to in no way contravene pertinent coastal policy set forth within the town's LWRP, the proposed improvements to have no effect on the visual or environmental quality of the water resources addressed within Town Code, Chapter 125, Sections 125-40 and 125-54, the existing use and the proposed improvements to be consistent with the general standard for all special permit uses set forth within Town Code, Chapter 125, Section 125-67, and the proposed improvements to be consistent with design guidelines for the Rhine Cliff Overlay RCO district set forth within Town Code, Chapter 125, Section 125-69. C, grants the requested special use permits under Town Code, Chapter 125, Sections 125-40A3, 125-54C, and 125-69B. Three, in the matter of the application for site plan review and approval, A, in consideration of the nature of the proposed work, waives subject to the submission of a list by type of the exterior building product, building materials, including hardy board siding, to be employed, to be employed the submission of any data not heretofore presented which would otherwise be required upon strict application of the submissions checklist set forth within Chapter 125, Section 125-75 subsection C. B, approves the application under Town Code, Chapter 125, Section 125-73, and authorizes the Chair to stamp and sign the above cited exterior materials list and the above cited site plan with any notation concerning lot consolidation eliminated, and to transmit signed copies thereof to the applicant, the ZEO, and the building inspector upon the applicant's satisfaction of the following conditions and/or requirements within the next six calendar months.
And the rest of that is strictly administrative, except for the fact, Gretchen, those paragraphs should be numbered one and two and not three and four, which obviously we're processing and it can be.
Okay, so can I have a motion to accept?
So I move.
Eric?
Second.
Seconded by Edna. Hold the board. Eric?
Aye.
Edna?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Woody?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Okay, next, under Old Business, Goomer Hollow LLC, 243 Morton Road. In accordance with Town Code, Chapter 125, zoning, Section 125-49G, three expedited site plan review and the Planning Board's adopted procedural resolution of October 3, 2016, Planning Board Review of the Requested Input and Consideration of Application for Amended Site Plan Review and Approval in the Matter of Expansion of the Farm Building Approved by the Planning Board on June 25, 2014, to Provide Additional Enclosed Area for Incorporation of a Regulation-Sized Dressage Field Forty by Eighty Meters Within the Structure. Oh, we didn't, oh, let's see. Oh, was the Ag Data Statement distributed?
I distributed.
That was the only distribution that was required.
Report on the observations by the Planning Board members. That was Edna and Eric.
Yeah, they're doing an impressive job out there. What can I say? It's, I was very, very impressed with the quality of the workmanship involved in everything they've done there. For this expansion of the arena, they're, they've gotten in touch with Unidilla, the company that made the original bent wooden trusses for the thing, and they've got the exact, they had those plans on file, so they're gonna get an exact replica of what they've got there, and it's just gonna extend it out to regulation size. Looks like a good idea. My only concern, it's not really a concern, just something to watch out for, is that the, let me see, the southeast corner of the building is gonna be outside the compacted fill area, and that's gonna need a little attention paid to it, either building up a foundation wall there or adding more fill, and as such, needs to, well, probably might have to regrade in that area for the drive that goes alongside it. So it's just something to look out for because it drains down to the pond, and so, silt fences.
Yeah, there's a beautiful lake below, and the slopes are pretty steep, so it'll be a little tricky to make sure that the silt doesn't move downhill.
But other than that, I thought, I'm eager, eager to see it finished.
There, there was a little bit of discussion about the kinds of things that might go on there. You mentioned that you planned for no public events in this arena.
The classification as a, as a commercial boarding, horse boarding allows for certain types of events, as we discussed in the last meeting. So if you wanted to do something different than what's allowed under that, we should have to get a permit for that type of event that's the, sort of.
Right.
So we all know.
It's essentially, it's essentially non-spectator events that are allowed and spectator events are not.
So we, as a spectator event, we would have to follow the tab, or that.
Do you have any sense of how many, like, cars and trucks and things like that might be there when you're in operation?
On a daily basis? Most, even larger forty-stall bars that I've kept horses at, it's almost never, you have more than four or five tenants there at the same time riding. So the use gets spread out. If there is a weekend, on weekends, it can be a little bit more, particularly people ride for an hour when they leave, or they drop their kids off.
Right.
It's not the type of thing where, it's a twenty-five-stall bar, but it's not even like a twenty-five seat restaurant. People are all there.
Right. Horses are all there.
Generally a lot smaller than any other kind of commercial business with that number of clients.
In fact, in a perfect world, you find that lucky tenant or client who wants to bring two or three horses there.
Yeah, just from my education, what would a private event be? You'd mentioned that there might be private events, but not public events.
That, that determination is what's in, in the, that cultural law. A horse show, it's a private horse show, would be for members of the bond or people It could be anything from ten to fifteen participants, to fifty, pretty much. It would really depend on the organization and what was happening. These kind of events belong on a ten altogether. It's not, it's often, it's often lost in law. It's an unusual thing for us. Something that's a public event, maybe something like hits, or the show that goes on on down to the corner, where people are paying to attend, and the audience spectator. It's a very different kind of law. So, these, those events are going on, they don't tend all the time. They don't really operate.
I have one down the street from my house that's, there's probably four cars there at any given time, so you'd never know that they had that capability. It's a slightly different operation, but it's very quiet. And just for the record, Eric and I and Sharon were all at an agricultural course just last week.
I was there, too.
Oh, you were? Oh, that's right, I'm sorry. But the one thing that they kept saying up there was encourage these businesses in your community because they, they bring in revenue, and we, and tax-wise, you can't get it better, taxpayer, because of their limited use and their low demand on our resources.
And they're purty.
And they're purty?
They preserve, they preserve open space.
Yeah, I mean, it's everything that we want. I mean, if we could have another two or three of them, we'd cut into his competition a little bit, but.
Can I, I just ask for my own curiosity, what Goomer Hollow, where the name derived?
It's a joke between me and Sharon. Sharon's brother.
Yeah, okay.
It is.
It's a little bit of a private joke.
All right. Sorry, I didn't mean to hit a sore subject. Enough said.
Okay, the town CAB?
Again, the town CAB held a site visit at the site and found the construction to be consistent with the LWRP policies that support agricultural and use in the town of Rhinebeck, and it was our understanding that we were looking at the extension of this structure, and that was a limit of what we were supposed to do. And historically, this parcel was devoted to agricultural uses many years ago, but it was agricultural use. Thank you.
We heard from Duchess County Department of Planning, and they said it was a matter of local concern. And is anyone here from the public?
Technically not a public hearing, but.
Yeah, we don't, I thought we waived.
Well, you can, you can entertain comment. It's technically not a public hearing, but you can, you know, certainly extend the courtesy if anyone wants to.
Good evening, Robert Donaldson. I'm a resident of Mill Road. Since the question came up of events that would be taking place at the facility, I would like to ask Mr. DeCola, directing your attention to the entrance on Mill Road, I guess called the East Gate Drive entrance or the old Carriage Trail entrance, how in any manner would this entrance be used by spectators, non-spectators, at the private events or public events?
Well, as I said, a public event is a different.
Yeah.
So if we have a permit for a public event, it would have to include any egress that we wanted to. I don't know, we could probably use as much of the farm as we could.
So much of the farm would include that entrance, the East Gate Drive. Any possibility heading south on Mill Road, there are two other entrances that have a chain going across it. Any plans on using those?
Those currently don't go into any interior, interior roadways.
Okay.
I don't see that happening.
All right. We have an old issue going back a couple of years ago, 2013, I raised an issue about entrance and egress on Mill Road. Now, for new members of the Planning Board, Mill Road is a designated scenic road in our town. It's one of the fifteen or sixteen designated scenic roads. And the East Gate entrance that we just referred to that could be used for these events, all right, it creates a hazardous situation. If anybody is traveling north on that road, there's a knoll, a dip going down, where someone can make an immediate left-hand turn going into the property there, and it creates a situation where there could be a car accident. Now, I raised this issue because three years ago, I brought up a court case that took place over in Ulster County, Russo versus Theo Valakis and the town of Lloyd, where the town was sued by injured parties, and he also sued the owners of the land. They sued the town of Lloyd because they knew about this existing dangerous situation. And immediately, the town of Lloyd moved to have the case dismissed in the Ulster County Supreme Court by a summary judgment. The judge denied it and allowed it to go to trial. So the town of Lloyd appealed to the appellate division of the Third Department, and the appellate division ruled against the town, saying, no, it can go to trial. Now, I raised this issue three years ago with another property on Mill Road, and I didn't get a legal response, so maybe the town attorney has a legal response. I can provide the secretary the name of the case and the citations, all right? When I last checked, it was still good law. Now, it's not binding in Duchess County, but if there's an accident there, and this board knew about it, and the town knew about it, and the owner knew about it, any good attorney's gonna use that case as a persuasive argument, and it's gonna be billing hours for the attorneys. And even if the case is denied in Duchess County, they're gonna appeal to the appellate division of the Second Department. It's gonna be a win-win for the attorneys, not to mention the loss of life or injuries to people. So I bring this issue up again, and I'd like it to be reflected in the minutes of this meeting, that if that East Gate entrance drive is going to be used for these special events, all right, that the town should take notice of the liability issue. Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other members from the public?
Can I just say that I'd also like the minister to reflect that he's not a traffic engineer, and that there's no liability that's been declared by someone like Sharon or.
Okay, but he has the right to make his comments, so.
Absolutely. I want the minister to bring that up.
That's true, I'm not a traffic engineer, but I cited a court case, and any person can bring a court case up, and I had the citation, things like that. Yeah.
Okay, I have a draft approval resolution?
Before you, before you got there, if I may, just for the, for the record, does the, does that east entrance show on the site plan?
Actually, I'd like to say a few things about it. First, I would suggest, one, is not part of the parcel that you have before you for approval.
Yeah.
It's an existing roadway. If we were introducing a new roadway, we would follow all the normal procedures of site distances and traffic engineering and.
Access permits.
The, the town would, would.
review and/or approve it or reject it, or make suggestions for signage. I would suggest that this roadway's been used for many years.
Many, over a hundred years.
In fact, a good example of a, maybe Mr. Donaldson would agree, a dangerous scenario is a tractor with a hay wagon pulling out onto the roadway so that a car may be driving too fast, traveling north, would come upon, you know, whether it's a trailer, it could be a car that pulls out. There are many, many driveways, I would, I would tell you, that are, that I find very frustrating because they're approved from years ago, and they are, in fact, dangerous. So, something for the town to consider in the future, not just signage, but even limiting speed limits. I, my experience with site development and introducing new access to sites is that signage helps, and the county often is resistant to changing them, but when the town has the opportunity, and the planning board might make that suggestion to the, to the town board, case-by-case basis.
And the speed limit is posted at 35 on that road? Though it's hard, although it's hard to find somebody doing 35. Okay.
Okay. Sure.
This guy can't go on a public hearing.
Yes, there hasn't been any accidents over the years, and there is commercial traffic going up and down that road, but there also hasn't been any special events at that entrance where we have cars pulling wagons and, you know, like a special event, all right, where you have more participants and spectators, there'll be increased traffic flow. And I stand to be corrected, but I live not far from that entrance, and I have not seen any type of an event like that at that entrance that I was referring to. You can post all the signs you want. I walk that road every day. I also pick up all the garbage on that road. No, very few people obey the speed limit, all right? Very few people driving that road obey the rules of the road and move to the side when people are walking or even bicycling up that road. I feel like I'm the old ogre on the road yelling at drivers to slow down and move off to the side. But as far as posting signs, a lot of people don't obey it.
Okay, I have a draft approval resolution?
Wait, I'd just like to get into this one second. It's my understanding that the primary entrance to your building will be on Morton Road. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's what's in the site plan, sorry.
Thank you.
And it's my, my understanding that no change with respect to access is being proposed from that which was previously approved by the planning board in 2014.
Absolutely. I just honestly answered Mr. Donaldson's question.
Okay.
And there are no special events at present planned, is that correct?
Yeah. We don't have...
Yeah. That was where I was going to, Mr. DiCola has clearly noted that there are no spectator sorts of events proposed at this point in time.
Right.
If any were to be conducted in the future, he has acknowledged the fact that necessary permits and approvals will be secured.
Right.
We're taking him at his word, more than taking him at his word. We're building that assertion on his part into the draft resolution. And beyond that, I think the, the planning board has done the due diligence it needs to do in the review of this matter under the expedited review procedure, and in the draft resolution that has been prepared, clearly established that that has occurred, and on the other hand, has identified clearly the exceptions or the exemptions from certain regulations that apply in the case of a farm building on an ag parcel. So, I think that is all, you know, as far, my effort was to try to document that all for the record. There is one comment that did come up. Someone mentioned the matter of stormwater management on the site, and under the expedited review procedure, that is not a matter within the purview of the planning board. It is, however, under the final paragraph of section 125-49, a matter within the purview of the CEO. Therefore, it's not dealt with at all in the approval resolution. I don't know it to be a problem, but if there is a problem of some sort, it's not a matter for the planning board. It would be a matter for consideration by the CEO.
Very good.
So, on that basis, I commend to you the, or recommend to you the draft resolution. And again, there is no separate SIKER resolution in this particular case because by matter of law, ag and markets law, a farm building and a farm operation of this type is a type two action precluded from environmental review.
Okay. Can I read it now?
Yeah.
Yes.
Upon conduct of expedited site plan review as provided for within Town Code Chapter 125 zoning, section 125-49G, three, in consideration of farm buildings in excess of 15,000 square feet in floor area or 80 feet in height, the town of Rhinebeck Planning Board hereby access follows on the application by Gummer Hollow LLC for amended site plan review and approval in the matter of expansion of the farm building approved by the planning board on June 25, 2014, and now present at Kiwell-Dacola Stables to provide additional enclosed area for incorporation of a regulation-sized dressage field 40 by 80 meters within the riding stable arena on that existing parcel. At 243 Morton Road, Ellersley Drive, within the residential low-density RL5 and Hudson River National Historic Landmarks District, Agricultural District 20, and the town's LWRA, all is depicted on a seven-sheet set of drawings, A-21 through A-27 entitled Kiwell-Dacola Stables, prepared by Rhinebeck Design Group PEPC dated March 1, 2016, and a three-sheet set of drawings SDS1 and DT1 and 2, prepared by Erdman Anthony and dated February 12, 2014, all as stamped, received by the planning board on September 12, 2016, and otherwise described in the application and supporting documents, including letter dated July 26, 2016 from Murray Engineering PC, a full EAF Part 1 coastal assessment form and agricultural data statement, each assigned by Michael DiCola, and statement by Mr. DiCola during the planning board's meeting of October 3, 2016, that spectator events are not presently planned at Kiwell-Dacola Stables, and should this circumstance change in the future, appropriate town permits and approvals would be sought. One reaffirms, in accordance with the requirements of the New York State Agriculture and Markets Law, its prior classification of the proposed action is a type-two action under SIKER for which further environmental quality review is precluded. Two deems neither the provisions set forth within Town Code Chapter 125-33, special setbacks on scenic roads and in scenic areas, 125-40, development near streams, rivers, wetlands, and other water bodies, and 125-54, development within water resources, protection overlay district, nor those related to major excavation to be applicable to the proposed expansion. Three, further deems the proposed expansion to in no way contravene pertinent coastal policy set forth within the town's LWRP. Four, grants the requested amendment of the site plan approval in consideration of the above cited drawings, sets of drawings by Rhinebeck Design Group PEPC and Erdman Anthony, and authorizes the acting chair to stamp and sign the same upon, and forward signed copies to the applicant, CEO, and building inspector upon the applicant's satisfaction of each of the below conditions and/or requirements within the next 180 calendar days.
And the rest of the resolution is clearly administrative.
Okay. Do you have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Woody, a motion and a second. Ted, I'll hold the board. Eric?
Aye.
Edna? Richard?
Aye.
Woody?
Aye.
And I vote aye. All in favor? Motion carried.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Under new business, we have Ann Mooreing, Mooreing and Carl Paris, 308 Sepaska Lake Road, wetlands permit and site plan review, sketch plan conference with the planning board, and initial presentation of applications for wetlands permit under Town Code Chapter 120 wetlands, and site plan review and approval under Town Code Chapter 125, zoning in the matter of the proposed addition of a two-car garage with living space above to a single-family dwelling on .3156 acre tax map parcel within the rural countryside RC5 and the neighborhood infill overlay districts, subject to an application for area variances accepted by impending before the ZBA, planning board review, and if timely, processing under Town Code Chapters 120 and 125, and SIKER. Okay. I don't have a checklist. I don't have a checklist.
No, this is, this is applicant procedure.
So, I just, I just read the procedural resolution.
He's going to present it first.
Okay. Well, that's why I didn't have my checklist. I didn't have my checklist. Okay.
Good evening, I'm Mooreing.
Presentation, presentation discussion.
Representing Carl Paris and Ann Mooreing. I think they're in our... Been to several other meetings. As Sharon mentioned and noticed, we're before the zoning board as well. Carl and Ann have had a house in Sepaska Village, probably one of the smaller houses, for about 22 years, and it was originally built as a clubhouse, and sometime early on, the original developer, builder, Nick Daley's father, converted to residence. But it's one reason why it had a very small lot and never had a garage. So, for 22 years, they've been parking on the road. It's a private road, and they all, you know, share the cost of buying and maintaining. But they've decided at this point, it's time that they get their cars off the road, and they think their neighbors may applaud. They'll have their opportunity at a public hearing, ready. But we looked at several options to put a garage on the house, and we thought the side would be promising, but the house is so small, a two-car garage sort of overwhelmed it, and there was nothing. We tried to, you know, forward, back, various different roof configurations, and at the end of the day, it seemed to work best behind the house, where it's pretty much hidden from, from the road and neighbors, and allows them to have a garage at the basement level as a great drop weight at the back, and then have additional space on the main floor and the living room. So, because it's a small, you know, pre-existing, non-conforming lot, we need a host of variances to do anything. Lot coverage, we're exceeding it before we even start with anything new. The setback from the rear is a pertinent issue. In this case, we're fine with the side, but because we have Sepaska Lake and then sort of a marsh area at the bottom of the lake, we're within 100 feet of that, so we need a wetlands permit. Initially, there was concern we might have too many accessory structures, but owing to a change in the zoning law that allowed small movable sheds to not be counted, the zoning board and CEO sort of finally concluded that we don't need variance for too many accessory structures. Because an attached garage, even though it's part of the same building, is considered an accessory structure. But anyway, so that's where we are with the zoning board, but again, the wetlands, the proximity to the wetlands means we need wetlands permit and need approval from this board. And so, that's what this application is all about. Yeah. Question do they have?
Okay. If there's no questions, I'll proceed with the draft procedural resolution. The town of Rhinebeck Planning Board hereby access follows on the applications by Ann Mooreing and Carl Paris for wetlands permit under Town Code Chapter 120 wetlands and site plan review and approval under Town Code Chapter 125 zoning, in the matter of the proposed addition through new construction of a two-car garage with living space above, each being 624 square feet in floor area, to a single-family dwelling on .3156 acre tax map parcel at 308 Sepaska Lake Road, within the rural countryside RC5 and neighborhood infill overlay districts, and within the regulated buffer of federal freshwater emergent wetland PEM1F, all as depicted on the site plan C1 and related building plans prepared by Warren Temple Smith Architects LLC, and otherwise described in the application, in short, EAF Part 1, affirmed by the applicant in being the subject of an application for area variances with respect to maximum lot coverage and minimum building setback pending before the ZBA.
At this point, we're going to try to do something. There's been comment made over time of, you really need to read all the resolutions, including the procedural aspects, the procedural resolutions. So, Sharon has just read the, the opening of this resolution, the action items in terms of referrals, et cetera. I will simply summarize rather than having the, the detailed reading. Number one, the board is accepting the applications. Number two, classifying as an unlisted action under SIKER, scheduling a public hearing for Monday, November 21 at 6:40, identifying two, two planning board members to conduct field visit, referring the matter to the conservation advisory board as required by the Town Code, and authorizing me to prepare a resolution for consideration by the board on November 21 or whenever appropriate thereafter. The only thing you need to do is identify the two delegated planning board members.
Who would like to go to the site visit?
I'll go.
I will do it, but I won't be here in November. I could email observations if that is acceptable.
Yes. Okay. Edna and Eric?
Okay.
I'm just wondering, I know that the new person being here, and that they both enjoy the restrictions are, and making that case, and will be open to public sort of people within the community, will be notified?
Yes, there'll be a public hearing, and the neighbors will be notified.
If I may, November 21 is not an evening that I can attend this meeting, so if we can defer it to your next meeting after that.
That is December 19?
Does he have to, do you have to notice how many people within?
Well, Sepaska, like Rhinecliffe, there are quite a few people within a 500-foot radius, so...
Isn't it shortened to 300 feet and some...
I think for wetlands, it's 500.
Oh, really?
Go for it.
Somebody have a calendar?
Next meeting?
Whatever the December date is.
December 19.
Huh?
December 19.
Okay, December 19.
Okay. At 6:35?
6:35, then.
6:35 on December 19. Okay, we did that one, right? Yes.
Well, you haven't, you need a vote.
Oh, I didn't make, oh.
You need a motion.
I didn't get them, I thought I did. Can I have a motion to accept this? So, you did, didn't you? No? Okay. Edna, motioned?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Eric, and voice, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carried. Next, Williams Lumber Incorporated, 6760 New York State Route 9 North, special use permit and site plan. Sketch plan conference with planning board, and initial presentation of application for site plan review and approval under Town Code Chapter 125 zoning, in the matter of the proposed construction of two T-sheds, one being a new structure and the other a replacement structure on tax map parcels, within the community business South District, set installation in compliance with lumber storage requirements under section 12568T, subject of an application for area variances accepted by impending before the ZBA, planning board review, and if timely, processing under Town Code Chapter 125 and SIKER.
Good evening, Mark Grinsky, representing Williams Lumber. So, this, before this board, it's an application for site plan consideration for, as mentioned in the announcement, for construction of two T-sheds. One is a new T-shed, and the other is a replacement in kind of an existing T-shed. So, this is the Williams Lumber property. It's actually, it's on the east side of, of Route 9, and it's actually two parcels of land. It's always existed that way. In this particular case, the new T-shed that is going to be constructed is located on the, on a smaller parcel, which is a little more than three acres in size, and it's shown right here. And both of these are, the application is, is to be in compliance with a section of the zoning ordinance that requires coverage of building materials on, for a lumber yard. So, that new T-shed is located here, and then there's an existing T-shed. And for the board members that don't know, it's, it's shaped like a T, so it's, goes up, and there's T that provides coverage for the, for the building materials. I submitted a schematic of that with the application. And then there's an existing one that's in need of repair. It's just going to be removed and replaced. This application has also been heard initially by the zoning board, zoning board of appeals for various area variances, initially for coverage, but then further conversation with the CEO. There were some other area variance requirements that were, that have been set, that have been presented to the ZBA. That is actually to be heard at public hearing this Wednesday. That is actually to be heard at public hearing this Wednesday. And that's it. It's just a very simple application for two small buildings.
Replacement, one is basically the same footprint?
Same thing. It's in the same footprint, same type of building. All, all similar.
Anybody else have any questions for Mark? If not?
All the, all these lot line offsets are on, on Williams, from other Williams properties, right?
They are, that's correct.
Okay, really. They don't have a whole lot to do with it much. It doesn't seem.
No, they are, yeah, Williams owns here.
Right.
Of course, they could sell those eventually.
The, if I might, Sharon, the draft procedural resolution, without even reading of the opening paragraph, basically repeats as an opening paragraph, the description of the project that's on the agenda, then proceeds to accept the applications, classify the applications as an unlisted action under Seeker, schedule the public hearing for November 21st at 6:45, delegates two planning board members to conduct a field visit, refers the matter to the CAB as required by Town Code, refers the matter to the Waterfront Advisory Committee as required by Town Code, refers the matter to the Dutchess County Department of Planning as required by general municipal law, directs the clerk to distribute what is required, in this case, an agricultural data statement, and again, authorizes me to prepare a draft resolution for your potential consideration on November 21st. Again, two, two delegates, two planning board members need to volunteer to conduct a field visit, and Mark needs to confirm that November 19th, or November 21st is acceptable to his client.
It is.
How can I have two planning board members? Woody and Richard. Okay, and I just have to have a motion? Have a motion?
Second.
Eric motioned it, seconded by Richard. Uh, this is just a voice vote, but yes, a voice vote.
No, no, yeah, voice vote, yeah, voice vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Oh, while you sleep here. Next up is Martin Saaznov, 703 River Road, special use permits and site plan. Initial presentation of applications for special use permits and site plan review and approval under Town Code Chapter 125 zoning, in the matter of the proposed conversion of a barn to a single-family dwelling on a 45.46 acre tax map parcel within the historic preservation HP20 Hudson River National Historic Landmarks District, Agricultural District 20, and the town's LWRA, and adjoining scenic roadway, subject of an application for area variances accepted by impending before the ZBA Planning Board Review and if timely, processing under Town Code Chapter 125 and Seeker.
Good.
Good. Good evening, members of the board. The video with Tekonik Engineering. I'm here on behalf of Tony and Martin Saaznov for the renovation of a historic structure, an existing barn on their property at 703 River Road. The site plan before you, which kind of softly introduced at the last meeting, the proposed site plan, we're here for site plan approval and, and several special use permits, given the, the nature of the existing site. Again, it's an existing barn, 3,900 square foot barn that's to be renovated as an accessory dwelling. Proposed septic system associated with the dwelling. It'll be a single bedroom upstairs, two bedrooms down in the walkout basement portion. Several variances, we've presented and had our application accepted by the zoning board of appeals, and we have a public hearing scheduled for this Wednesday. Just provided each of the board members a letter from the Dutchess County Department of Health. They have accepted our technical design of the proposed septic system, and it's basically a preliminary approval, they, they won't issue their final, they won't stamp the plans, basically, until we get our, our site plan approval. Also provided to the board, subsequent to our last meeting, was correspondence from SHPO. We've been, we've gone back and forth with SHPO and gotten our final approval for the proposed renovation, both the foundation work that we hope to expedite, as well as the facade work, the window.
Which of it should I read?
I have, let's start off with, I have found the submission, both the engineering and the architectural submission, to be quite complete in this particular case. Have no reservations about recommending to the board the acceptance and processing of the, the applications. Interestingly, in this particular case, SHPO has entertained the request of the applicant for comment, and therefore, the provision in the draft resolution that deals with, entertained the request for comment and furthermore, signed off. There's a sign-off letter from, from SHPO on the, the exterior modification. Consequently, the provision in the draft resolution that deals with the referral to SHPO at this point in time, and that's paragraph 12, can be deleted. The only other comment I have with respect to the, the draft resolution beyond naming two or three delegated planning board members to visit the site, is that in the opening of the resolution in line three, there should be added Section 125-62. The applicant's representative, representatives noted that several special permits are required, and in fact, they're required under five different sections of the zoning law. And the, the one in, the one that was not listed here under 12562, is in fact, the provision that deals with the adaptive reuse of a historic building. Beyond that, I recommend the, the resolution. The resolution simply cites all of the materials that have been submitted in support of this application, including picking up the revised plan that was submitted on October 5th, and then proceeds with acceptance of the application. Classification under Seeker, which is type 2, it's a residential item. Scheduling of the public hearing for November 21st at 6:50. Directing that certain notices be, be issued. In this particular case, one somewhat extraordinary notice that you don't run into all of the time, because of the proximity of this property to the municipal boundary, there's a special notice required to the town clerk of the town of Red Hook. Referral to the CAB, the WAC, those normal conditions, referral to Dutchess County, ag data statement, and again, authorization to prepare a resolution. The one additional item that is included in the resolution is, and we're going to read this, is numbered paragraph 2. As recommended by the ZEO and planning consultant, authorizes the applicant to proceed at his own risk upon issuing of a permit, if such is issued at the discretion of the ZEO and building inspector, with the foundation replacement work to protect the integrity of the historic barn, independent of the proposed residential use, as, as was discussed in the Tekonik Engineering Letter of October 11th, and a letter from the applicant, Mr. Saaznov, of September 9th, in which he specifically said, "This letter will serve as our declaration that no work outside the scope of the foundation repair or replacement shall be conducted without Department of Health approval and subsequent sign-off from the planning board for the proposed site plan in its entirety." And again, they were looking to be able to advance that work in light of the forthcoming season of the year.
Can I ask a question about this, this particular project? This, this barn is going to become the primary residence, or is this going to be?
There's a, there's a, there is a confusion in the, in the record that's going to have to be sorted out and would be sorted out in your resolution. There's the, the, in some cases, it's referred to as being the principal residence, in others, it's referred to as being the accessory. My take on the situation, and again, it can be sorted out, is that this, being the major, major building, will be the principal residence on that lot, and the current cottage, if you will, is going to have to, will, would be re-designated as either an accessory or as a guest cottage.
Are, we're, we're, this, the proposed barn renovation will be the accessory building?
Then, then it, it raises, that raises certain zoning issues that have not been addressed with the ZBA. I don't think you want to go in that direction.
To have this be the accessory?
Square footage, et cetera.
The size, square footage is too big for, you have to go for.
We do have, that is part of the variance application for the.
Oh, okay. It's, it's not clear in the documentation I saw.
Actually, in the, on the. Site plan on C103, it lists out the variances, what, what are existing is, what are proposed is, and what the difference is.
Okay.
And that wasn't.
Yeah, that matter's not included in the, in the resolution anyway, but.
Yeah, right.
It was in consultation with them, they thought that the history of the primary residence should, it should retain its, its stature as the primary.
The primary residence on the adjacent parcel, or the, or the current guest cottage on this parcel?
The current guest cottage.
Okay, the current guest cottage.
That's the only residence on this parcel at this time, right?
Are we talking about the 2,800 square foot structure?
Yeah.
So now that becomes non-conforming accessory structure because of the square footage there? So that's a variance?
The, um, I'm sorry, which one?
Well, this becomes an accessory structure.
This is going to remain the primary structure?
Okay.
This is going to be an accessory structure.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
So the existing, the existing will be the principal, therefore, that is not square footage constrained.
Yeah.
This will be the principal with a variance, will be the accessory with a variance with respect to the.
Correct. So we also have.
It's, it's.
Solar panels become an accessory structure, right?
Yes.
Or did they get limited, they are?
It's a, yeah.
I don't remember hearing about them last time.
Um, yeah, it was, it's, it's always been a part of the plan, it is a part of the accessory structure, it's not counted for the zoning code for roof structure as far as area.
Now, this is, I see screening. Is that screening from the new barn, so you don't have to look at the panel?
It's both, from the adjacent, yeah, from the adjacent parcel, I mean, there's basically only one point that you can see these, is a very narrow window to the adjacent parcel, which the, the Saaznovs also own, but it's, it's both.
The configuration of, oh, sorry, go ahead, Ned.
Oh, I just wanted to say, I'm Nancy Kelly, Town historian, and I just want to point out to you that the present residential structure on, on the property is a very important early stone house in Rhinebeck's architectural history. And so I would urge you to leave that as a primary, so that there's no possibility of wanting to tear down an accessory structure and give the variance for the floor plant, for the square footage of the barn that will become a residence. But just so, so you're aware that this house sits closer to the River Road and is a very important house in Rhinebeck.
Any other comments?
The, the solar array as shown.
It's big.
That is, that is a big solar array. It looks like a big, is, is that the number of panels on it?
More of a graphical representation. We've, we've submitted subsequent renderings to the planning board.
We're asking for the largest that we would possibly want to request, but, but we're planning on now properly sizing. The zoning board also asked for a rendering of the side. And so, it's a four kilowatt, as drawn. It'll be screened, it'll have a maximum height of, of just a little over, over six foot 10.
Oh, okay.
Requests requested. And those were requested by the zoning board of appeals, so those are provided to the ZBA as well.
Where are they?
For approval of the accessory.
This is where they'll be located, they're screened by multiple layers of.
And not visible from River Road either?
Absolutely.
All right.
Just coming through, it's, it's a very thick wood right there.
Yeah.
Got a couple more changes.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the board members?
Couple more modifications. In light of the clarification that we've, we've just learned, or just heard of, a couple of small, less small, important modifications in the draft resolution. Line 6, the, of the opening paragraph, in line 6, the conversion here is not to a single-family dwelling, but is to an accessory dwelling, and the square footage, the total of approximately, the total square footage is 7,800 square feet of habitable floor area, based upon the, yeah.
That is, that is.
Which, you know, just a way of comment, it's hardly a de minimis variance to go from 1,200 square feet to 7,800 square feet.
Just to, just to, I mean, that's because of the way it's, it's.
An existing structure, yeah.
Because it's the existing floor plan for us to condition the lower space at all, which we are going to do for, for, you can see in the plans that you have, over, I believe, we're, we're, I think it's five, a little over 5,000 square feet is going to be actually finished, and, and a lot of that is with laundry and, and facility, facilities. The rest is just going to be conditioned space for storage.
And that's because, right now, it's kind of one of, it's an open, you know, there's a recessed court, and it's open to the elements, so the idea is to enclose that lower portion and have two small bedrooms down.
And it doesn't, doesn't reflect upon the resolution, let's delete the word habitable, and just still the fact that it is, it is 7,800 square feet of floor area.
Okay.
So those are the, those are the recommended changes, the, I guess we, we got to that discussion based upon my pointing out the, we were dealing with the fact that there's built into the resolution, the authorization to proceed with the foundation work, if so authorized by the, by the ZEO and building inspector. No one has any problem with that, I trust.
Okay.
One quick question. The whole section about proceeding at your own risk, didn't we just get a document from sign-off for Department of Public House?
There's, there's still proceeding, there's still proceeding at risk, because again, there's no guarantee, I don't think there are any issues involved, okay?
Right.
But on the record, there's no guarantee of Health Department approval at this point in time. There's no guarantee of the grant of the variances, and there's no grand guarantee of the issuance of the special use permits and site plan approval. We think all are going to be given. We don't see any issues, but there's no guarantee.
Fair enough.
The client is anxious to shore up that house and, and utilize, you know, do it in a timely fashion. Yeah.
Okay, um, who'd like to conduct the site visit? I'd like to go. Wants to go with me? Edna? Eric? Okay, let's have three go. And contact, who should I contact?
You can contact me.
Okay. Okay, um, can I have a motion to approve the draft procedural resolution?
I'll move.
With, with paragraph 12 deleted.
With paragraph 12 deleted, yes.
I second.
Motion made by Eric, seconded by Edna. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we have Legacy Landscapes and Design LLC, also known as Phantom Gardener 2, 6837 New York South, Route 9 North, New York State Route 9 North, special use permits and site plan. Initial presentation of applications for special use permits and site plan review and approval under Town Code Chapter 125 zoning, in the matter of the proposed construction of a 5,440 square feet storage barn and other building and site improvements integral to, integral to a retail nursery use on a 6.357 tax map parcel within the Community Business South District in the town's LW, oh, it's not in the LWRA.
Is it?
No.
Okay.
And subject of an application for area variances accepted by, oh, is it?
It is.
It is. 500 feet on the other side.
Yeah, it's on the other side, wasn't it, 500 feet? Yep, sorry.
Williams is included.
And the town's LWRA, subject of an application for area variances accepted by impending before the ZBA Planning Board Review and if timely, processing under Town Code Chapter 125 and Seeker.
Be quick. Good evening, Mark Graminsky, representing Legacy Landscapes and Design LLC for Phantom Gardener. So this application, as mentioned, is for, for site plan and for area variance applications for various items. Just to note, the, had an initial meeting with the ZBA for this, and it is scheduled to be on their agenda for this Wednesday. I'll get into the area variances in a second. So this application, the main read.
So this application, the main reason for this application is the proposal of a 5,440 square foot building. So Route Nine is located here, we're on the west side of Route Nine. This is the, the main office and the showroom area, display in through here, and then some existing greenhouses, here, 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 and then there's like a landscape storage pad located through here. I don't know, this property is split by the former Hartford and Connecticut Railroad, and so that right-of-way is also shown through here. The parcel boundary, it was, application was made a while ago, quite a few years ago to this board where this piece was, was added to it. So it's kind of a T-shaped piece of property like this. The total parcel size is a little more than six acres, 6.357 acres. And there is also, shown on the plan, is there's some ACOE wetlands or town wetlands. Those are designated on here, and then the associated 100-foot wetland buffers are also shown. In addition to that, it's, there's some floodplain that is, you know, associated with Rhinebeck Hill over in this direction here, and that, there's portions of the property that are within the 100-year floodplain. This, this application, the proposed storage barn, is kind of located in the middle of the T. And it's not, this application is not only the construction of that, but there's, you know, in the transmission, transmittal letter to the, to the planning board, it's, you know, construction of that barn, and it's, there's also relocation of the pergola. So the existing pergola is right here, and it's going to be relocated to the west a bit, and that's shown, it's shown in solid lines, so the existing location is dashed, the solid is the proposed. There's also replacement of 100-foot square room, 100-foot square foot showroom deck, which is located here, and that's going to be replaced. There's removal of an existing 506 square foot overhang, shed overhang, and that's located on the northerly boundary right here. So there's just, there's a, it's a bit of an encroachment, so that shed overhang is also, is going to be removed. Removal of about 1,700 square feet of driveway, there's a, there's a driveway that encroaches on the adjoining property, which is Delpino to the north. So that's to be removed as part of this application. And then also, removal of two existing greenhouses, and they're about 1,500 to 2,000 square feet in size, and those two are shaded right here. And so, the applicants have agreed to remove those two greenhouses, and then it's going to be, those are to be removed. And then this is the location of the, of the proposed barn. And so that's, that is the total application. With that, as I mentioned before, it requires area variance application to the ZBA, and on the left side of my drawing, I list the, it's for the number of accessory structures. So only three accessory structures are located on the property, are allowed on the property. Eight are existing, seven are proposed. We're actually reducing the number of accessory structures. The code says, similar to the previous application, maximum aggregate footprint for accessory structure of 1,500 square feet, 10,342 exist, and it's increasing a bit to 11,628 square feet. So that is the area variance application in front of the ZBA. And actually, I just received a note from Ron this evening, with the removal of the shed roof, we're also going to list the side yard setback. So this, there's an, there's an existing two-story dwelling to which that shed roof is attached, and so when you take that shed roof off, he just wants the area, there'll be an area variance for side yard setback for that existing two-story building that's going to remain. And so those will be heard this Wednesday evening by the ZBA.
You need a, they need a setback variance because they're removing the roof and the existing building is too close?
Correct. So the current position of the town is, or the ZEO, even if, even if it pre-exists, and it's non-conforming, and it pre-exists, it requires, if you're in front of the ZBA, it requires an area variance to, to make it conforming.
So if you just left it there, you wouldn't need to do anything?
That's correct.
Uh-huh.
And, but we were in front of the ZBA anyway for a number of accessory structures, so it's included.
Mark, if you touch base with the ZEO on the question, I think you will find that the ZE, ZEO may remove the requirement for the variance with respect to the number of accessory structures. I believe we had a discussion, he and I had a discussion, and I pointed out that the requirement concerning the maximum of three accessory structures just exists on residential properties. That is, that does not apply to commercial properties.
Right, but, yes, but it's, it's, we're still in excess of the aggregate.
The aggregate square footage still applies, but not the number of structures.
Correct, that's correct.
Mark, did I hear you say that the, the whole shed roof is coming off, or just the, just the overhang?
Just the overhang encroachment. So it's, it is a shed roof, so that, that's, that, there's a shed roof attached to the building, and that shed roof is being removed.
Okay, so that whole thing is going to...
The whole thing will go.
So we'll go back to the, the 17-foot wide structure that's...
That's correct.
And did I also hear you say that the proposed, um, storage barn is in the 100-year floodplain?
It is not. It's located outside of the 100-year floodplain and also any wetland restrictions by town due to the town wetland ordinance. Originally, application was made to this board, it did include a wetlands application, but then there was a meeting, there was a pre-app meeting with the planning board, and then the applicants decided to remove that from the, from the application.
How will the barn be used?
Yeah. It's a, so the owners of Phantom Gardener are here, they can, they can describe that?
We have, there is...
You have to come up to the mic.
Hi, I'm Tony Capabbo, one of the owners of Phantom Gardener. So there is literally no storage on the property, other than the two old greenhouses, which, if anyone ever has been in a greenhouse, when the changing weather happens, it's not much of a storage area, everything gets soaking wet anyway. So a lot of our inventory that is outside in the wintertime, that kind of stuff, most of our bag products, the coastal main compost, those types of things will be stored under there. Equipment, trucks, things like that will kind of go to that one spot. There is literally nowhere else on the property that, there's nothing existing right now for storage at all. So we're basically looking for exactly that, a giant storage building for all of our product as well as our equipment.
And what's the overall height going to be? Is it going to, single, single story?
Single story, it's 16-foot ceilings, and we were under the required height, I forget what the...
35 feet.
35 feet, we're well with under that. I think it was only 20-some feet tall.
But it's like a truss roof?
Exactly. Yep, yep, exactly.
Mark, I have two simple questions. Is there any problem with the old railroad right-of-way? Are there any restrictions on that as far as it going through the center of the property?
No, there are not.
I, I'm just curious.
There is, there is an easement, there's, there's a utility line.
Yeah, I understand, I know that's something...
There's an easement for that, but nothing associated with the railroad.
Okay. And the other question is, does this fall under the Ag and Market sumbrow? I don't know. Do they grow anything in that back part of that property? No. If you were to have a nursery and grow stuff there, could it, could it list itself as...
I don't know.
I believe, and I believe a retail nursery does not fall, a nursery that is essentially for the growing of silver, you know, for products, et cetera, would be covered.
But this is, this includes retail sales?
This includes retail sales.
Yeah, well, what threw me off was the greenhouses, but they're not functioning as greenhouses, you're using them as dead storage, basically.
Yeah, they're storage, yes.
Okay, any other comments?
My comment is, again, I think I made the comment to someone earlier about their application. This is a complete engineering submission, and there is a building plan submission that accompanied with respect to the storage building, so it's, it's a complete application that can be accepted and processed by the, by the board.
One last question about the right-of-way. This is Connecticut Railroad?
Yes, it's common when we refer to it as...
So it goes through the adjoining properties as well?
It does.
And could they, next week, decide they want to put a path through there, so anything, you're not allowed to build on that right-of-way?
No, they, the Legacy Landscape owns this, as do all the, you know, so it's no longer wine gardens, whoever owns, they have fee ownership of it. They have fee ownership, and as you go, as you go to the north, too, fee ownership. And as you go through Astor Courts, fee ownership, same rail line.
Okay. Hooker Bush Line?
The Hooker Bush Line.
Yep.
Add a, add a couple of identification, a couple of delegated planning board members, and the bottom line is, there's nothing extraordinary in the procedural resolution. Secret classification, skills from the public hearing, the necessary referrals, CAB, waterfront advisory committee, counterplanning, et cetera.
Do I have two board members that want to go on the site visit? Richard?
I'll do it. Let's try to coordinate with him. Walk across the street, and do them both at the same time.
Okay, Richard and Woody? Okay.
Works for me.
Okay, can I have a motion to accept the resolution?
Go ahead.
Eric?
Seconded.
Seconded by Edna. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Oh, I forget this person. Next is Wilderstein Preservation, 330 Morton Road, special use permit and site plan. Presentation of a reapplications for special use permit and site plan review and approval under Town Code Chapter 125 zoning in the matter of the proposed restoration of an existing potting shed to its original appearance and adaptive reuse of the structure as a detached accessory apartment on tax map parcel within the historic preservation HB-20 in Hudson River National Historic Landmarks District and the town's LWRA, classified as a Type 1 action under SEAKER for which a negative declaration under SEAKER with incorporated statement of consistency with coastal policies under SEAKER was previously issued by the planning board. Related area variances granted by the ZBA and approval since expired, granted by the planning board, planning board review and processing under Town Code Chapter 125.
Good evening, planning board. First, you are, you are very patient and gracious with your time to approve our application. I am personally responsible for not extending the site plan approval. We had thought we were receiving Department of Health approval months ago, and, and when the owners rep suggested to me, hey, maybe we should extend it, I said, no way, we're going to have our Department of Health. So we're here because I allowed it to expire by days, and I apologize for taking more of your time. So we're, our program has not changed. We do, in fact, have a Department of Health design approval. We're ready to work, and we're, we've got donor, donors anxious to spend money, and we're anxious to do this great thing for the town. I've pledged to make up for my mistakes, and I would ask the planning board, I know you're bound by rules, because in fact the site plan approval did expire, but if there's anything you can do to help us expedite or move forward in some way, in any way most expeditiously, we're, we're willing to do whatever, to take your suggestions and guidance.
Is there anything else standing in your way?
Just you. I think, I think we're happily ready to submit plans for permit, but we, we of course need our renewed site plan approval.
Just refresh me, the apartment that you want to put in there, is that for rent or is that for staff?
I'd love to let Greg, I think, talk about that. I don't know that there's a real program, but there's a, there was a desire, I would say it started with the donor, or donors said, hey, we don't want to just restore a building and have it sit with no use. And the, so whether that is a caretaker, seasonal caretaker, I think we talked about it maybe being someone who's essentially a student in residence that does work and lives there and studies this estate, or in fact, somebody who rents it and does caretaking as part of the rent.
So it's undecided.
Right, but I think everyone's anxious for the benefit that will no doubt come along with that.
I imagine you're some...
Did you want to answer that, Greg?
That's, that's a good presentation, what we look here at the table.
The challenge is, I mean, actually, it's a beautifully efficient little house, I mean, it will be, but it is quite small, it really will be a studio.
Tiny house.
So really will be, right, it's, it's probably a little bigger than what is now called tiny house, but not much.
What is the total square footage?
It's really less than 20 foot by 20 foot, so it's a single, it will be a residence for some single person.
What is it that we're here to do tonight on this?
Okay, the, Robert asked if there's anything the board can do to expedite this. He pointed out, you know, there are rules, regulations, et cetera. Unfortunately, there's no provision in the zoning law for the waiving of the public hearing requirement. There's a, there are provisions regarding waiving of submission requirements, et cetera, but not of the, not of the public hearing. The bottom line is, the only thing you could do in that regard, and I don't know how and when you would do it, is you could schedule a special meeting far enough down the road and before the November 21st meeting, such that the public hearing, the notice requirements could be met in the interim, and I believe that's a 10-day notice requirement. So that's the only thing you could do to expedite. Otherwise, what you would need to do is schedule the hearing for the, for your next meeting and hopefully be committed to taking action, having a quorum here and taking action that particular evening. As I provided for in the draft resolution, there's no need in this case for repeating referral requirements or anything of that sort, because they've all been, they've all been addressed. As Robert pointed out, the, the project has not changed, except for one little iota, which will be reflected in the building plans, I understand. I understand the finished floor elevation is going to be elevated a foot or so in order to accommodate Health Department design requirements.
It actually, it actually produces, it's a better position for a building that needs to manage water around it.
But why are additional approvals necessary? That's what I'm not clear on.
Because the approval expired.
I see. You haven't started the work yet?
No.
We were obligated to wait for the Department of Health approval, which was awfully long.
Yeah. Health Department approval did not occur, therefore the site plan could not be signed, you know, et cetera. So that's the, that's the...
Just, just for the lack of a filing that this is all happening again?
No.
Yeah, it's, unfortunately, unfortunately, that is, that is the case. It's the, because of the circumstance of an expired permit, that, as Robert just pointed out, an expired permit because of the absence of a prior request for extension, that undoubtedly would have been granted.
Can I ask a question?
Would it be possible legally for you to just simply reinstate the approval?
No, it's expired. You know, that's the thing, it terminated.
There's no, there's no wiggleage here, there's nothing, nothing we could do.
We can't extend it now? We can't extend it now?
It's not there anymore.
It's not there anymore. Once it, it's, it's the same discussion we had concerning a variance earlier today. There's a variance provision one year if you don't execute it. In that case, essentially, in the words of the provisions that relate to the planning board, if certain things aren't, don't happen in a timely fashion, the approval expires. In the words of the zoning actions, if certain things don't happen in one year, the approval becomes null and void.
And given the, the time that's required for public notice, what is the earliest date that anything could be...
Effectively, two weeks from now.
I see.
Does it make a difference to you guys? Are you going to break ground?
Is it, is that-
I've got a shovel in the car.
I mean, that, you know, that would be determining whether, you know, whether or not you'd be willing to do that, whether you have quorum available, you know, et cetera.
So we would just, if they were in a big hurry, we could get together in two weeks?
That's, that's how I see it, yes.
Okay.
If, you know-
Are you in that big a hurry?
Well, I'll tell you why we, well, I would, I would back up and suggest, months ago, I did approach the CEO and ask, is there any way the Department of Health could be considered a deferred submittal? It's pending, but, and we know we'll get it. And I would say we have a special site and a special use in that the, the design flow for the septic system is very low. We never thought we'd have trouble getting it. It's just a matter of waiting. And we were told appropriately, no, there is no provision in the code now. I would suggest in the future, it might be nice if in some way, shape or form, things like Department of Health submittal on maybe case by case basis could be a deferred submittal. We would be done with the project by now.
With the exception of the fact you can't have a building permit without a health department approval. So it's not, it's not a zoning issue alone. It's a building permit.
But I'm not suggesting the building department or the planning board allows a building occupancy or completion, but-
No, I'm talking about permit.
But I'm suggesting permitting and not working on a septic system until a design is, but working on the building proper, foundation, construction, with the risk of course of maybe that applicant of course has to produce a DOH submittal. I just thought it might be-
Proceed at their own risk.
Yeah, or, yeah, or, yeah, proceeding at their own risk with effectively, and we're just, we're just, the bad things around here, it doesn't really affect, with, with the understanding that the approval at that point in time is for non-residential occupancy. You'd be basically doing a, you know, equivalent of a storage building.
I think, I think in this case, the, the organization is most anxious to, to move forward with the job. It's not, it's not, the urgency is not the occupancy as much as it is the project and the anticipation and the, the energy that's, that's-
Does two weeks buy you anything?
Sure.
If we did that, should we, can we add other things on our next week so we can shorten our holiday leaves?
There isn't much you can add, Richard, because you've got a three week, applications have to be submitted three weeks before the meeting, et cetera. So basically, you're talking about, you'd be talking about a, a special meeting for a single, you know, for this single item.
We could meet and we could feed you dinner somewhere.
Oh, there's a-
We can't bump up some of the ones we put off for public meetings that we just had?
The, the problem of each of those, each of those other items, I believe, they all require, they all have 30-day referral requirements built into them.
Okay.
That's the, that's the trouble. That's what distinguishes this, is the fact that those referrals have all occurred in this particular case and the, and the project has not changed.
So since you're here anyway, can I just ask, out of curiosity, why you're not using a pump-up system on septic instead of raising the floor?
Let's see, a few reasons. I personally think if, when you can, well, first of all, I'd say raising the building is good for the building from an architectural point of view, from a maintenance point of view. So just operationally. But I would say that whenever you can create a gravity, gravity septic system design-
Very reliable of gravity.
It's just much nicer. Otherwise, we, we now use pumps with alarms. So they cost more money, they use energy. I have one in my house and I don't like it. It's okay, but it, I have two pumps and there's an alarm and it goes off every once in a while.
So it's not just the floor you're raising, you're raising the whole building?
The whole building.
Okay.
It's, and I would, I would suggest, we talked about it a lot, the building will actually show better and look better. It's not a tall building. It's rather short and squat. So it's very low. So I think it'll present itself better still.
So do we have interest in a two week?
Well, two, in two weeks, it's Halloween.
Oh, man, that's going to cut way into my activities.
The following Monday is the day before Election Day. We can't meet here because they set it all up for the election. The following week is the town board.
You can, you could meet down, on occasion, the board has met downstairs. The only impediment there is that downstairs is not handicapped accessible. So you'd have to make special accommodation if, if someone who needed special assistance were to be here for the, for the, for the hearing. But that board, the downstairs has been localized on occasion by the planning board and/or the town board.
So if we have a meeting and no one shows up, the meeting will be 10 minutes long?
That's long. Shouldn't take that long.
Thanks. Do we have to have it on a Monday night?
I was just going to say the meeting doesn't have to be on a Monday.
Well, it's a special meeting.
And the other question is, can you get the letters out to the, to the neighbors in that short, in that short window of time?
I'm sure we can.
Yeah, just repeating something that's already been.
No, I'm just making sure we're aware of it, that's all.
Well-
Well, you have to get a promise to muster a quorum, it would seem.
Right.
So what is that Monday, Sharon?
Halloween, October 31st. No, I'm not coming out on October 31st.
That's a bad idea.
Too scary?
So the following, if it's a Monday, the following Monday-
What about that following Tuesday?
November, oops, November 1st?
All Saints' Day or something like that?
It is All Saints' Day.
All Saints' Day.
You're right.
I have a friend with a birthday on that date and it's totally inappropriate that it's All Saints' Day.
Isn't there, isn't it the whole, the link though, the day after Halloween is All Saints' Day?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
What I keep hearing is we're jumping, jumping from pillar to post and back and forth. I think we probably ought to stick with the one month thing and let it go.
Seems to be a clean-
I respect that. Is there anything the planning board might do or permit to let us move forward in some way? I mean, we otherwise, I guess-
Like promise not to drive by, that kind of thing?
I mean, we otherwise, I'm guessing, would wait till November 21st and the resolution would pass and then we could submit for a permit.
You know, the other thing that we have done here, just to inform the board, is we said, you know, no further plans, et cetera, required, you know. You're doing this strictly on the old documentation, no current, no, no, no additional submission, copies of drawings and other data, no, no additional payment fee, whatever. And that's, you know, unfortunately, that's as far as we can go.
That didn't quite follow that up.
They don't have to submit a site plan.
Number four here, what about number four, they can start some stuff?
I think we will communicate carefully and thoroughly with the CEO and the CEO and plan.
Oh, okay, that's, that's the thing, I, you know, again, the planning board can't do this. Good thing, glad Sharon pointed this out to me. That's what happens when you do your meeting notes a week before the meeting, or at least a week before.
It's nine o'clock at night.
I have included in the planning board's resolution and I don't think the planning board's got a problem with this, but it's not the planning board's call. "In the interest of permitting work to proceed on the project prior to the onset of winter, authorizes the applicant to proceed at its own risk upon issuance of permit, if such is issued at the discretion of the CEO and building inspector, with foundation work, water supply and/or SDS installation and related excavation prior to planning board grant of approval of the reapplications."
So we can-
But again, the planning board can't, can't authorize that, but it can basically suggest that the, you know, the board doesn't have, the board doesn't have a problem with it as long as the downstairs will permit it. And the only, and the only condition that relates to that and is repeated the condition is the, the prior commitment that you made to carefully look at dirt to make sure there aren't any artifacts.
Right. Well, we appreciate that support.
Yeah, I'd forgotten about that.
Part shards in the potting shed.
And that, that softens, that softens the November 21st also.
Okay. So it's up to you and Ron then now?
So we'd go through a normal process and negotiate downstairs for some leniency or some accommodation.
So Gretchen, there are a couple of dates that just simply need to be completed in there. You know, I don't know what they are right now, but just references to the variances when they were granted, et cetera. I've got February dash, you know. The only thing, the only change in the resolution, Gretchen, beyond that, is in the, the four, eight, ninth line, delete words under SEAKER. That's repeated in the eighth and ninth lines. So repeat it, delete it in the ninth.
Okay.
Accepting the application, basically scheduling a public hearing for November 21st at seven o'clock.
Okay.
And-
Do I have to?
And, and including that, that authorization subject to, that's it.
So I have to have a motion, right?
You have to have a motion.
You need a motion?
Got a motion.
Edna, made it, Woody seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, ZBA, ZBA referrals.
I took it upon myself to review the ZBA agendas and related minutes, if you will, in the last couple of meetings, and include it on the planning board agenda, the referrals that were not formally made to the ZBA, by the ZBA to the planning board, but are required to be made by the ZBA to the planning board. So I just want to say that there, there are, and you'll see that four of the first five listed here involve matters that have been otherwise on the agenda this evening. The Moore and Paris, the Sazanoff, Williams Lumber and the Legacy Landscape projects. I provided here just a very brief description of what the setbacks are. They're basically small setback items in every case. There are yard setbacks, aggregate square footage of accessory structures, et cetera. There's another one that's not subject to, to planning board approval and it's a minimum side, front and side setbacks for a residential addition for Keaton, for Sue Keaton on, that's Lower Hook Road. I basically reviewed all of these on behalf of the board and am suggesting to you that none of the, none of these five raised any planning or environmental issues and recommended that all five be grouped together in a single resolution of comment and recommendation to the ZBA. And that's set forth on the top of page 23. Again, finding that the planning board finds, and basically saying that I reviewed them on your behalf. Planning board finds no proposed, proposed work to raise no significant planning or environmental issues. We've made no assessment of whether there's practical difficulty. That's not your role. That's the ZBA's role. Recommends the ZBA rely upon its own study of the facts and points out that in fact, four of the five applications are otherwise subject of proceedings before the planning board under special use permit or site plan review and that any conditions that might be attached by the ZBA to their grant, assuming they grant the variances, would simply be incorporated in, within the planning board proceedings. That's the, that's the status on, on those five. There are two others, I grouped those five together because those are all applications that were just accepted by the planning board, by the zoning board at its last meeting. And as we heard this evening, in four cases, scheduled for a public hearing at this meeting. So if the ZBA wants to appropriately close out its record on these, if the planning board offers recommendations to do an appropriate closeout of its record, subject to other necessary referrals which are none of our business, referrals to the CAB, referrals to the county or what have you.
Are we done?
Yeah, no.
No.
Does anyone have a problem with page three?
Twenty-three, page twenty-three is okay.
Yeah, so that's, that would be, that would be a motion by the board.
Oh, okay. So I have to have a motion?
If you accept.
Motion for these, these five for the ZBA.
My move that we accept this recommendation.
Second?
Second.
Woody seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Okay.
Then there are two other matters that are subject of applications that were previously accepted by the board, previously scheduled, subject of public hearing by the ZBA, but not yet subject of decisions. And those are the Jacob and Suits applications. Again, to protect the interest of the applicants, I'm recommending that the planning board actually offer the required recommendation to the ZBA on these matters. And those two matters also are those that really don't involve any planning or environmental issues. The Jacob application, which is the guest cottage situation that is before the board, is a minimum setback and a minimum, a maximum square footage of accessory structures item. The Suits application, which is probably not a matter that's going to come before the board, simply involves the maximum number in square footage of accessory structures on a residential lot. And in fact, in the Suits application, I would submit is not even appropriately before the ZBA with respect to the number of accessory structures on a residential lot. Because the vision of the zoning law is that if you exceed three accessory structures on a residential lot, the relief is the grant of a special permit by the planning board and not a variance by the ZBA.
Wasn't there also a size issue with the, the structure in question? Wasn't it an old garage that was falling down or something?
Could be. I, not necessarily, I'm sorry, the particulars.
And the Dowding Community Solar Farm?
That's a, that's a separate item. That's a separate item. That's not dealt with in the, in the resolution. So the, the second resolution deals with Jacobs and Suits. And again, it's very similar to the, to the other five, but I thought we should separate them in that they appear from, they appear on basically in different, at different stages of consideration by the ZBA.
Okay, can I have a motion to approve those comments to the ZBA?
I move that we accept that recommendation on those two applications from the ZBA.
Edna made a motion, second?
Second.
Woody, oh, Richard seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carried.
The other item, again, not referred to the planning board, was the Dowding Solar Farm application. Not referred to the planning board and that application has reached the point with the ZBA of a public hearing being conducted and closed.
Really?
Yeah. And here's what I've, you know, I've found on that particular application. And I don't know what the remedy is. There's no record of acceptance of the application by the ZBA. There's a record of, of public hearing being noticed. There is no referral of the application by the ZBA to the Dutchess County Planning Department, or at least there's nothing in the file, to the town planning board, the town CAB, or the waterfront advisory committee.
Well, how does that go through then? How does it all, how did it get to where it is then?
I think it may be a recurring problem. And there's a, some consideration, again, this is a use variance, this is not an area variance, of whether the matter is actually one that's appropriately addressed through a use variance or is it really more appropriately the subject of a individual topic related local law by the town board, you know, solar collectors, et cetera, or by appropriate zoning amendments that would be adopted by the town board. The, that's the, you know, the fundamental consideration. I could, you know, other comment I would have on the application would be essentially, there's an argument presented that is site-based in terms of the property not being usable for agricultural purposes because of its physical condition. Well, that's not really unique to that particular location. It's something that's shared by thousands of acres of property around the community.
What makes it not usable for agriculture?
They're claiming that the soil condition, the wetland, et cetera.
But the test is, is it suitable for any other use?
Right, that's right. And so there's this physical argument that's based upon a lack of agricultural capacity for that particular land. And as again, I said, you know, if you could look at the town's natural resources inventory, that argument could be applied to thousands of acres. I don't know if that door should be opened. And there's an economic argument that the property offers limited development potential and therefore limited dollar value based upon 10-acre zoning, which again...
What's the size of it?
Yeah, it's a 16-acre parcel, so the argument is you would have to cut off 10 acres for the existing residents on the property and then have, simply there's residual 6-acre parcel that apparently you would, I don't know, maybe secure a variance for, to develop that. But the argument is, the economic argument is based upon the presence of 10-acre zoning, which is an argument that even pales when you consider a comparable argument that could be made to property in 20-acre zoning. They can't realize a return because of the zoning, and again, it's not unique to that property. It's unique, it exists with respect to thousands of acres of property, community life.
So it could be used for a single-family dwelling, obviously.
Yeah.
And this is, they were gonna, proposing, you know, maybe a 10-acre cut off of that 16-acre piece and they're gonna use the 10-acre to put one acre of ground-mounted solar?
I'm not sure, I'm not sure if they're even, if they're proposing to subdivide it. I mean, it, you know, but the one-acre corner is, the proposal is to utilize a portion of that land for that purpose. The question is, is, you know, and again, I mean, the ZBA is gonna ultimately make the decision here, but is it more appropriately a matter that should be considered by general rule by the town board as to how to handle the regulation of...
Yeah, it's a big deal.
Yeah.
This is a community solar farm, so they're gonna sell shares.
Yeah.
So you're gonna buy a piece of this action.
I don't know how it's...
Yeah, it's a fascinating thing. I watched, I went to a course over at Millbrook, and they sell shares. One acre is very, very small.
The...
It's not gonna produce that much. Usually as minimal as like four acres is like the minimum.
I think what the application says is that there would be adequate energy developed here to serve the Dowden Residence Insurance Agency and enough energy maybe to serve 30 homes, and that energy would essentially be, I guess, sold to Central Hudson. And obviously, one of the arguments here, and that's a decent argument about the proximity of that location to the Central Hudson Station. I mean, that, again, makes sense. But the arguments about lack of agricultural potential and the economic argument are just shared by thousands and thousands of acres and open up a real Pandora's box.
It doesn't meet the test for areas.
The town's exposed anyway because they don't have any regulation on solar collection farms.
But this is, New York State regulates this stuff too, with community solar farms.
Right, yeah.
So it's a very, in that respect, it's regulated. But hasn't the question of sightliness come up?
Hmm?
Do we really wanna look at solar panels?
Yeah, where, I mean, where's this, can we...
Actually, the...
Not visible from anywhere?
The location is to the rear of the property, behind the fragmites or whatever.
Oh.
You know.
So you can't really see it from...
I think that's, I think, you know, again, I didn't review the details of the application. I was looking at the substance of the case being made before the ZBA and the fact that, you know, this matter was proceeding to public hearing and through public hearing without...
I'm kinda shocked that I didn't hear anything about it at all.
Yeah.
Can we send a communication to the ZBA with a query?
What?
Can we send a communication to the ZBA?
It's really their business, right?
Well, you, I mean, they haven't, you know, they haven't referred it at all, but you could express that there's, you have a fundamental concern about, maybe the key thing is the fundamental concern about this matter being treated on a case-by-case basis by use variance and not by some sort of general legislation by the town. And my understanding that the town attorney may be working on a piece of general legislation.
Well, don't we have the problem, we have a gatekeeper that brings that information in and he puts it over there or puts it over there?
Well, the gatekeeper, the gatekeeper in this particular case did what was appropriate. The gatekeeper denied the, denied a permit for the particular use, pointed out it was not an authorized use in the community. The applicant, or the, which is really Hudson Solar on behalf of, proceeded to go to the ZBA and apply for a use variance. So that's the circumstance, you know.
I thought it was very regulated by New York State.
It is, oh, yeah, also by New York State as well as, you know...
Wouldn't that be their business model is regulated by the state and not so much the location?
The town, right.
It's the business model.
The town can restrict it with its zoning...
Exactly.
Its use permits and stuff, but the state regulates how it, how it's put together and how it's, the financing works and how it's sold back.
Exactly, yeah. So, you know, the, we have to get to that, right. The thing is, you, in absent a referral, you might just let this pass without comment.
But...
But I felt it was necessary to point out what was involved here.
But all, we get everything typically referred to us, right?
We got a siding job referred to us.
Yeah.
Now we got a solar panel field, solar field going in.
We, I think we've got, there was a time when applications were being referred. I think there's a, some slipping right now of following the appropriate procedures that may have to do with changes in clerks, et cetera, et cetera.
But only on this application?
Well, no, these, no, I picked, I picked up all of these referrals. You'll find no record, you'll find no record of any of these matters being referred to the planning board.
Let me ask you a silly question. If this hasn't been referred to the planning board, why are we even talking about it? Not that we're not all interested.
He's saying it ought to be referred to the planning board.
Yeah.
And, but I don't know what we can do about it, ought to be.
Nothing.
So don't comment on the matter.
Too late, we've already commented.
Well, no, you haven't commented, you haven't taken, you haven't taken...
Always said is wonder why we didn't get it, that's all.
No, yeah. I've commented and I believe it's my responsibility in some form to point out if appropriate procedures are not being followed. And those procedures are explicitly spelled out in the zoning law.
I don't know if I necessarily agree with that. They're a completely separate body, they make their own decisions. Do they have their own attorney?
No.
Do they use ours?
No.
Or the town's?
If the case requires, they bring in John Lyons.
I would think that John Lyons should be coaching them on their, the appropriateness of skipping certain requirements.
Only if he knows that they're doing it.
Right, so we should, someone should send an email to John and ask, you know, is this appropriate, but other than that, I don't think we should do anything.
Well, maybe that's the appropriate thing to do.
So why don't we then...
Is that a motion?
Yeah, make a motion that the board contact Mr. Lyons and ask why this was not referred to the planning board.
If that's a motion, I second it.
And in addition to that, there were other cases that applicants that you feel should have, may have...
There's a, there's a requirement under the zoning law that all applications to the ZBA be referred to the planning board for comment and recommendation. There is also a provision under, oh, I guess it's, well, it would be town code chapters nine and 118. Under chapter nine, all applications to the ZBA must be referred to the CAB for review and comment. And it's just like planning board action.
But this is just review and comment.
And under 118, that if something is occurring within the LWRA, it has to be referred to the waterfront committee. And if it's within the 500 feet of roadways, certain roadways, et cetera, it has to be referred to the county. Those are, you know, the referral requirements for a ZBA are no different than the referral requirements for a...
So our recommend, our motion is then, we would like to know if proper procedure is being followed with the referrals that are, should come to us.
Yeah, yeah.
I second the motion.
Are we directing that to Mr. Lyons? Or who are we directing that to?
That was the suggestion.
I think we're directing it to Art to draft up a letter and send it to John Lyons.
Yeah, okay.
Is that fair?
Yeah, which will be, which will be the same as a note that I sent a couple of weeks ago to the ZBA, pointing out what the procedures are to be followed and they didn't happen.
But at least we're on, we're on the record for that.
That's fine, okay, there's, there's...
Wait, wait, we have to vote.
A motion and a second.
We have to vote. We have a motion and a second.
What's the motion?
The motion is that we are, we are asking our planning consultant to send a note to John Lyons to ask whether or not proper procedure and notifications are being used in all of the referrals that we feel should be coming to us.
I would recommend that you change that to, if you're sending a note to Mr. Lyons, asking him to review the procedures. That softens it a tad, but it still does the same thing.
Yeah, review the procedures, review the, review the ZBA record to ensure, yeah, to ensure that procedures have and will continue to be followed, you know.
With the example of the recent...
Yeah, yeah, this is it, yeah.
Okay.
And the second?
Yeah, I understand what you're asking.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion carried.
I've got a 15-second item that either Sharon or I should have mentioned when we mentioned the agenda at the front. There's a matter of a short-term extension, the Jonathan McCown case. Why the extension is short-term is that the planning board can't grant an extension on a site plan approval that extends beyond the expiration date of the variances that were, related variances that are issued in the action. In this particular case, the related variances expire on the 22nd of October, the end of this, end of this week. By planning board granting an extension of its site plan approval to that particular time, there is the potential opportunity of the applicant somehow coming up with his health department approval this week and therefore meeting the condition, having, meeting condition of site plan approval before his variances expire.
Can't they get an extension?
Otherwise, he's gonna have to go back to the zoning board of appeals.
Can't they get an extension in the zoning board?
No, the zoning law under, there's no extension with the zoning law. Variances in the terms of the law become null and void if not, if action under those with respect to the use is not commenced within one year.
So what's, what does that mean? If I go out and shove a, shove a little ground?
No, no, you have to have your permits. You have to, yeah. So that's, and it's not, and it's a provision, if you look at the law, it's, the variance becomes null and void without any further action by the ZBA. It's an automatic...
What project is this?
This was McCown up on 308 and...
Ryan, uh, Rob.
9G, 9G, that is.
Yeah, 199.
199, right.
The bridge approach.
The bridge approach project.
Across from Saasnov, actually.
Yeah, the...
Behind Miglarelli's fruit stand.
Oh, oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, the nice, nice, nice graphics plan, et cetera, well-represented architectural plan.
Yep, yep.
Yeah. But, so the only thing you can do is town planning board extends to October 22nd, 2016, which is the expiration date of related area variances granted by the ZBA. It reextends, extends to the, extends to October 22nd, the time period for Jonathan McCown satisfaction conditions and the requirements set forth within the planning board site plan approval.
So a motion, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Woody?
Second.
Aye.
All in favor? Any opposed?